All right, City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1431. Today is the first of April. It is now 7:04 PM. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with item number one on the agenda is the roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Adams, Pezzet, Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yeah.
All right, let it show that all council members are present and accounted for. Item number two is the minutes. Has every council member received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? All right, hearing none. Item number three is presentations, and we do not have any presentations, but I do need a motion to amend the agenda. Is there a motion, Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I motion to amend the agenda and move items B through K under new business discussion. These ordinances will be presented at the April 8th work session, and they require two-thirds roll call vote.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Um, no, there's not.
All right, hearing none. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend, the agenda passes. We are going to move, remove items B through K under new business, and they will be presented next week. So, moving on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. Uh, so when recognized, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription, and comments are limited to five minutes. So, if anyone would like to address council, please come up to the podium, give your name, address, and your comments.
I wanted to come and address council for two reasons this evening. The first of these is that, um, after 32 years, Joe Orndorf has retired as the Chair of the Waycross Community Meeting, and he suggested two possible people as replacements, including myself. And the board was kind enough and generous enough to elect me as the new chair. So, as the new chair, I wanted to come and let you know that. And also to say that Waycross has always been very pleased to be a partner with the surrounding communities in bringing government access and public access to our communities. And please know that if you have any other services that you want from us, please contact the office and talk to our Executive Director Dana or contact one of your three board representatives, who are myself, Councilmember Harrison, and also Assistant Fire Chief Jermaine Hill. The second reason I wanted to come is to thank the city very much for awarding myself and five other women this award for being significant in some way in advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city. And I wanted to, um, when I learned about this, I jokingly said to my friends, "The reason I'm getting this is because I'm old, and I can't say no." And I also know that people who do things for a long period of time often get awards like this, and I sat on this council for 16 years, so I think that is part of the reason. But I wanted to say that no endeavor in our lives, in work or in volunteerism, is ever a singular event. We stand on the shoulders of people who come before us. We are helped on our jobs and in volunteerism by so many other people. When I served as a teacher, I knew the three best people, four best people to have on your side in schools were the secretary, the librarian, the AV person, and the janitor, because they all made you look good. Um, when I worked for the Ohio Education Association, I know that my secretary made me look good. I know that, uh, I relied all the time on the people in the central office, the consultants in collective bargaining and communications and research and governmental responsibilities. And I couldn't have done my job without the help of the people with whom I worked and for whom I worked, the local leaders. Um, when I was on this council, I know that I was one of seven people. And nothing that you do on council is singular. You have to have a majority of at least four persons to advance anything on this council. Um, I know that we, this council would not look as good as it ever has hadn't been for our clerks of council, if it hadn't been for the implementation of it by our city manager and our department heads and all of the staff. So, I share this with all of those people. I want to call out some people, though. In addition to the six people who were honored with this, our first Vice Mayor here was also honored with the Key to the City for the work that she and others, again, not a singular activity, with other people, did in the March on Selma. And, uh, she was a part of this. I grew up in the 1960s. I was also a part of this effort to advance civil rights for African-Americans. And that there are hundreds and hundreds of people who did this all over the country. And it started a movement, not just to help expand the diversity for African-Americans in our country, but launched movements that helped women gain recognition in the 70s. It helped us fight against discrimination on the basis of age and disability in the 70s and 80s and after, and for sexual orientation after that. So, those are all endeavors that hundreds of people have taken part in. And I want to echo what you said. We are under assault on all those advances in our country right now, and we have to, after 60 years, I'm tired of fighting, but we have to continue to fight for this. The other people that I wanted to acknowledge were, when I was on council, one of the things that we wanted so much to do was to recognize our veterans. We have no veterans organization in the city. We have no veterans building in the city. Uh, but it, I have to thank Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore, and Councilmember Terrence Harrison, who are veterans and have those connections and were able to really advance that. Again, with the support of council, the support of staff to do that. And I thank that, and I'm so glad that happened. Finally, even though I knew that you were the MC, you weren't the only person responsible for bringing together this recognition of women, and that's also council buy-in and city buy-in and staff buy-in to do that. So, thank you so much for this. Thank you for recognizing that this is a community effort. I share this with all the people that have helped me get this. And, um, I want to pass on something to you. When you do this next year, please don't forget the women who came before, many of whom are dead, and consider maybe posthumous awards for some of those people, because there are a lot of people that came before us, a lot of women who came before us that deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Herbie.
At least I've got my pencil in my hand.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to address council? All right, all right, it should be a sign-in sheet up there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Teresa Davis. Um, sorry for my attire. I was at baseball practice, but I just wanted to come in quickly. So, my, I have been a resident of Forest Park for 19 and a half years, almost 20 years, um, in August of this year. And I'm coming to make a complaint, and I'm sorry to bring it to you guys, but unfortunately, it's just kind of, I've just got a frustration with something that is going on that the city's kind of backed. So, um, my son plays sports. He's nine years old. Both my daughters graduated from Wynton Woods High School, only went to Wynton Woods, uh, school, so I've been in this neighborhood and been part of the community for quite some time. And, uh, my concern is the Rex Parks and Recreation. Um, if, there's a major issue there. There's a huge issue there. Um, so, uh, my concern is, is that we are losing a lot of our, not only good people as far as coaches and people that want to volunteer and stay here in our community, but we're also losing good children that won't get to play with their friends because that department is just not, in my opinion, ran correctly. So, for instance, this past season for basketball, um, you know, we didn't have a great season, and that's okay. That's going to happen. However, we didn't get a pizza party. We didn't get an acknowledgement of, hey, just so you guys know, you know, you guys did a great time. The uniforms we received, I'm sure, were old, had been there for maybe a couple of years. None of them fit properly, because although I put youth medium on the website, he was given a youth large, because once again, I'm sure they were just hanging out somewhere in the basement and was given to us. Um, it's, it's been going on for quite some time. Um, so, I've now had to take my son to Woodline for baseball, when he wants to play in Forest Park with his friends. He wants to be here with his classmates. But because he said that we didn't have enough sign-ups here, and we didn't have a coach, we weren't able to get it together. However, I provided him two names for coaches that were willing to coach for the, for the age group that my son is in. So, I mean, I could sit here and probably go on and on. I mean, it's been very unorganized from the jump. Um, it's just, it's not right. It's not okay. My son wants to play here with his friends, and I don't want to go to another neighborhood. I want to stay here in my neighborhood and participate with my community and my friends and my neighbors. I don't want to have to go to Woodline. I don't want to have to go to Forest, I mean Fairfield or over to Springdale. I don't want to have to do these things. So, we really need to work on getting that department cleaned up, for lack of a better term. I mean, we didn't get anything. There was no pizza party. There wasn't a, you know, hey, I'm so glad that you guys, you know, you did your best. We were putting a tournament this past season, an AAU tournament, against the best of the best kids in the, in the city, all over the city. It was an all-star team. And they put our team, who had only won three games this season, up against them. We lost 80 to eight. Those kids were defeated. We should have been in a different tournament with kids that were in the same skill set as us, not, not kids that were well above our league, and then our poor kids walk out feeling completely defeated. So, I'm just here to say, I, I hope I don't have to come up here and make us think all the time about it, but we need to do something about it, because it's been this way for some years. My son is nine years old, and he's been playing baseball since he was four. He's been playing basketball since the same age here in Forest Park. And there's always an excuse on why it's not, not put together properly. So, that's what I'm here for. Thank you, guys, for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, well, first, I want to say thank you for coming to council tonight to even bring this to our attention. Um, and, and thank you for letting us know everything that is going on. Uh, we, unfortunately, we are very aware of similar complaints from other residents regarding that specific department. Um, and I think that it's insufficient for us to tell you that, oh, we're working on it, and, um, quite frankly, we will do better. Um, but that's the first thing that I'm going to add as a work session item, to have another discussion about the Parks and Recreation Department, because it doesn't matter what sport, doesn't matter what time of year, whatever season, we have heard these same complaints, and it does need to be addressed, because there are residents who would like to play here, um, and they are going to other communities. Uh, now, um, I don't want you to, to give up on us just yet, um, but I, I am giving you my word that you will see improvements. Thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to come speak to council?
Hello, members of council. My name is G S Frazier. Uh, I am a Vice President of Brick Dwelling LLC. We do infill, new construction, and, uh, and we did a project in the city of Forest Park last year. We completed a, a new build, and we were hoping to do some more. Um, with that in mind, I purchased, uh, we purchased a property at 1294 Waycross Road. Um, purchased that at the Hamilton County, uh, Auditor's Forfeited Land Sale. Um, the, the sale was on the 11th of September. Uh, the sale was not confirmed until the 6th of October. Um, in January of 2024, I received an invoice from the city of Forest Park in the amount of $1,960 for grass cutting at that site. Um, they said they cut the grass once a week for seven straight weeks because it was higher than seven inches. That's what your ordinances say, that grass, anything seven inches or higher is in violation. They claim they cut the grass seven times in late October, uh, because it was in violation. Um, when I received the invoice, I immediately contacted Mr. Chris Anderson, and I did a public information request for the information. I requested, uh, proof that, uh, the, the, there was a problem. I, I requested, um, the, uh, the, communicate, the invoice from the, the contractor that did the work. I requested, uh, the notice to the city manager per your own ordinance. As your ordinances say, that when there's a property in violation, a notice is to go to the city manager, that this property is in violation, and then the city manager is supposed to issue an order to have that property placarded. I requested all of that information by, uh, public information requests. The city did not send me anything other than the cover letter that they sent to the previous owner for his building, and they sent me this. They sent me a whole bunch of this, this right here. This is what they sent me. This is a page, and I couldn't, I couldn't blow it up. It says, the address, 1294 Waycross, and then it says $30. But, or just 30. It doesn't have dollars. It's just 30. They sent me a whole bunch of this. Um, I communicated back and forth by email with Mr. Jones and with Mr. Anderson, numerous times asking them to, uh, rescind this matter if they cannot provide me with documentation. I am a retired district chief with the Cincinnati Fire Department. The city of Cincinnati has a policy that says, if it was not documented, it was, it did not happen. The city of Forest Park was unable to provide me with any documentation at all. They couldn't show that there was a problem. If there was a problem, they should have, they should have had before and after pictures of that lot with that grass being high. They didn't have the pictures. They don't have the, the notice to the manager that there was a problem. The prob, the property was not placarded as your ordinances require. None of that was done. Mr. Anderson and Mr., uh, um, Chris, Chris Anderson and Mr. Jones, they both told me that this is valid. It's going to stand, and pretty much, they said, it's valid because we say so. But they didn't say anything about their inability to prove it that, that it was valid. Um, I'm requesting that this body rescind this bill for $1,960 for lack of evidence. Um, and, you know, I know that you guys work with Mr. Jones and Mr. Anderson. They all might be your friends, but right should be, uh, ahead of friendship. I'm asking you to rescind this because of lack of evidence. But let me say this. If you choose to agree with Mr. Anderson and with Mr. Jones, then you found your solution to any budget problem you might have. All you got to do is send a thousand citizens a bill for $1,960. You don't have to prove it. You don't have to show that you followed your own ordinances. You don't have to show nothing. All you have to do is say, "It's valid because we say it so." I'm asking you to rescind this charge for lack of evidence. Thank you.
All right.
Let me see your receipt.
Thank you for, uh, bringing this to our attention, Mr. Frazier. Um, and, and thank you for your, uh, your business. You said you do brick dwelling and purchasing, and you purchase land as well. So, um, this is, yeah, since this is, the first time this is coming to, to council, let us confer with our city manager and the relevant departments, um, to find out what notices were sent and when. Um, and then we can have, uh, Mr. Anderson and our city manager follow up with you on the matter.
I'd like to say this. Mr. Mayor, again, we'll follow up on this. I've answered his request in writing. Um, his written request with our written response. We do not agree with what he has to say today in its entirety. That $30 bill, as you, as you know, a, when you request a public record, city is under no obligation to create a public record. That is a copy of a bill that we received from a, from a, from a, uh, from the person who cut the grass. We can't, we can't control what he provides us. All we can do is make a copy of it. So, we'll be glad to take this up in the next work session and allow him to come and make his, his, his pieces there. This isn't a conversation.
Yes, just really quickly.
Mr., Mr. Jones?
Sure.
Uh, in your ordinance, 96.51B, it says when there is a problem, the, 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 the city, they shall provide you with a notice that this prob, this property is in violation. Mr. Anderson didn't know that. He lectured me, and I have all my emails here. I can give you the copies of the emails. I'll leave them here with you, as a matter of fact. They're all right here.
Okay.
You can see my communications with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Jones by email.
Yeah, please, if you just submit all of the documentation you have, we'll discuss it at our work session.
Yes, sir. 96.51B says that a notice is to go to the city manager. Mr. Anderson didn't know that. I had to show him that. A notice is supposed to go to the city manager that this property is in violation, and then the city manager is supposed to order the, the, the property placarded. They should be able to provide that through my public information request. You should at least be able to provide me those notice, those notices and those orders that you followed your own, uh, ordinance. Um, like I said, right now, I, I have over there, I have the, the, I put stakes in the ground at a seven-inch mark. We're in spring for the, I, three weeks ago, I put those stakes in the ground with, with seven inches noted on it. In three, in, in spring, the three weeks of this spring, that grass has not grown seven inches. But the city says in October and November, when grass growing is dormant, that it is necessary for them to cut the grass once a week, once every seven days. And that's, that's not reasonable. And, 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 and Mr. Jones, he says they're not obligated to fulfill this public information, but you are obligated, you are obligated to fulfill your own ordinance. You are obligated to abide by your own ordinance, and the city cannot prove that they did.
All right, to, to that end, you did submit the records request. This is new for council, so like I said, we were going to discuss this at our next work session, but we will have everyone get back to you with a response. We appreciate you coming in, though, and we appreciate you purchasing land in the city.
Yes, sir.
Sir, if you want to go, come to the podium.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, John Cox, 718 Danbury Road. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I got a notification that I can't have chickens. Um, couldn't find it on your guys' website. It says animals and pets, watered, fed, and housed. They are, um, I'd like to try to get it changed. I don't know what I need to do to go about it. Can you guys give me a hand?
Okay. Well, thank you. Uh, thank you for bringing this up. Actually, surprisingly, you are not the first person that has brought this to our attention. Currently, uh, I'm unaware if our zoning code actually addresses this, so this will be a question for, um, uh, specifically, okay. This will be something that we'll have, you'll have to get in contact with our planning department, uh, Mr. Chris Anderson, and he'll be able to navigate you through the process. But I, I, I think it should be, um, it'd be beneficial for us to have a discussion as council about it as well, um, to, to see where we'll, we'll come out on the determination on this. As I've done a bit of research, I understand that, um, you know, chickens aren't any messier than any dogs or any louder than, than things like that, so it may not present a, a, um, a detriment to, to the neighbors. But at the same time, there are other neighbors who have the right to decide if they want, you know, a chicken coop. So, we'll go back and forth about it.
Um, just, a lot of the cities around us have them with no roosters.
Right.
Which, I have a rooster in the neighborhood, not mine. That's how I got caught with chickens. So, okay. Yeah, I got caught for having chickens because I had a rooster.
Yeah.
But I'll have a rooster. All right, so Chris Anderson.
Yes, yes, Mr. Anderson.
All right, thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
We thank you.
Thank you.
What's your address?
There isn't one. No, live.
No, there is a ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll discuss. I'll add it to the work session. All right, uh, at this time, uh, we're going to close item number four, which is communications from the public. And we're going to move on to item number five, which is reports from council members, starting with Councilmember Adams.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and hello to council. Um, a couple of things. Uh, I had the amazing opportunity to attend two engagements within the month of March. One was the Minority Breakfast. That was exciting, and awards were presented for that, as well as the, um, Women's History Month engagement, um, which was exceptionally well-done. Had a wonderful time. The food was absolutely magnificent. Um, awards were also presented for that. Um, in that, and had an opportunity to vote, of course. And when I went to go vote, um, there was a young lady at the polling place, and a couple of other residents had pulled me to the side. And so, I guess these could be work session items, but some of the concerns were the floors at the senior center. And then for those that are mature, um, also known as older, um, having chairs that would allow them to have arms on them, so they can get up and down out of their seating. That was a huge concern. That conversation came up twice. And then, um, wanting to follow up again on Kroger, um, just to get a better, um, understanding. I know there was a meeting, uh, with our city manager and our mayor. I just recently, I believe it was the mayor as well, just recently, just really anxious to find out the direction that we're going in with that, if there's been some type of plan. And then, uh, wanting to also let residents know about the beautification. We are going to be doing our, uh, judging. And, uh, with that, we have some exciting new flags, and we want to, um, just encourage residents, if you are listening or watching today, we encourage you to call and have your property listed so that we can for sure see, come by and see it. Uh, we will, you know, if we see a property and it's great, we'll, we'll definitely make note of that. But to ensure that we are able to, um, judge our property, we're asking that you please call, um, so that we don't have the burden of having to go back out to look. Um, we have a, a small team that, uh, will be judging, and so we want to be as efficient as possible. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am done with my report.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Yes, sir. Again, I'd like to, uh, talk about the flooring in the senior center. If we could please, uh, uh, talk about what we could do to have, that seems to be our gathering space. We, we want to definitely keep that, uh, space, um, well-groomed. Also, too, the possibility of purchasing chairs in that space that would allow our mature adults to get up and down out of their seating. Um, so we need quality seating for that. That has been a conversation. And then, um, just wanting to follow up on kind of what's going on with Kroger, um, as we are really wanting to maintain and improve and elevate that relationship with them and what will they need from us to do so.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right, thank you for that. Uh, next, we're moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh, at this time, I don't have a, um, I don't have a report. I just wanted to make a quick mention that we're all pretty, pretty aware that we lost someone very near and dear to us, uh, in the, in this county. Uh, my thoughts and prayers are with Bridget Kelly's family. Uh, she was a, oh my goodness, a fierce fighter, model, public servant, and did so until the very end, and so we are very much indebted and appreciate her service. And just please keep her and her fam, uh, her family right there in your prayers.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember Clark, I, I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
Uh, no, the aforementioned ones will be on the next work, work session.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I have nothing at this time, but I'd just like to, uh, remind our citizens, next Monday, that'll be the eighth of April, there is gonna be a solar eclipse, um, passing through this area, so, um, please be mindful, do not look into the sun. Um, that could damage your eyes. They do have glasses available. Uh, so just make sure you get a pair of those, so you and your, uh, loved ones can watch the eclipse. For those residents who will still wanna serve, uh, once again, yes, we do, glasses look just like this. Okay, so just make sure you get a pair. Uh, residents who do wanna serve on various boards and commissions, please, um, submit an application, so we can get to know who you are, interview and, and get you sworn in to be a part of, um, some of these boards and commissions. And with that, sir, I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember, would you like to add anything to the work session?
At this time.
All right, moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
Good evening, everyone. I, I don't have a report for council, but I would like to give a big thanks to Dr. Moore, our clerk of council, and Miss Adams. But I thank the city of Forest Park for honoring me on, in March for Women's Month, and, and, uh, presented to me, presenting to me the key to the city. I'm usually not short for words, but I was in awe that I couldn't get my speech together. I was so overwhelmed with it, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And the work that I've been doing all that time, I continue that work today. And I will be retiring from my job at the end of May, and I will be busier, traveling around the country, speaking to people, and telling them my story, and hoping they will come on board with doing the right thing by going through the polls every time they open. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I do not have anything to add to the work session.
All right, thank you for that.
Very proud of you.
Vice Mayor Holt. Uh, moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I do not have a report at this time.
All right, do you have anything you would like to add to the work session?
Can we look at, um, vaping and education around vaping and our, our surrounding businesses who provide services? Can we take a closer look at that and maybe have our, our police come in and give us some information on, um, how to improve the quality of life regarding, um, access to, um, products, um, in, for, um, our community? So, if we can just have that conversation. Um, some citizens have had some concerns, um, regarding some businesses who offer products. And so we just need to make sure that, um, we're not exposing, um, our youth. Our youth have access to, uh, products that are harmful to them. And so if we can take a closer look and have our police department give us some information on how to, um, just better manage and better, help our citizens and some of their concerns regarding one of our businesses.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Uh, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor, uh, just a comment to, uh, the city staff for, uh, doing a good job, uh, on, uh, March the twenty-third for the breakfast with the Easter Bunny at, uh, Frisbee's there in Forest Park on Wind Road. Uh, it was well attended. Uh, the kids, uh, were enthused. They had a good time. Had some, uh, nice gifts that, uh, were given out from the raffle and from the coloring contest. So we do wanna thank the city and staff for, uh, doing a, a good job with that. And we thank the residents for continuing to come out and support the event that's being sponsored, uh, by our Parking Rec Commission. And also, I know we should be, uh, having a meeting, uh, this week. I haven't heard of any notice of not too, but we'll, we'll just, uh, uh, do a request on the activity that may have taken place, uh, with the, uh, with the ball, uh, with the team that experienced, uh, the setback, uh, that was spoken from our resident. I know, uh, it's a, it's a different time and days, you know, uh, I know back when me and Councilwoman Moore, uh, we had a great experience, uh, through, uh, uh, through the, uh, sports program and, um, but we know it's a challenge. Uh, the city does, uh, uh, look toward and, and, and depend on, on a good, uh, volunteer, uh, work to come from our residents. So we, we do, uh, wanna put a shout out to those that, uh, that are able to actually come and support our youth and, and give of their talent to, uh, to help provide good coaching and direction. We welcome that, and we, we don't want any of our youth to, uh, have to have bad experience, uh, with their, with their growing and getting their understanding to, uh, to figure out what they would love to do in their, uh, in their life. But, um, we know it's a challenge, but we, uh, we're up to the challenge, and, uh, we solicit for those to, to come out and help. And, um, uh, we, we just, uh, we believe that we'll, we'll overcome it, so, uh, but with that, uh, that's all I have on that.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Is there anything to?
Yes, uh, I don't wanna overload, uh, the, uh, the work session where we don't,
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
But just maybe get it noted. But I know we still have areas of, 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 uh, some homes that have encountered burnouts, damage that exceed, um, wants to be able to still live in, in, uh, in those areas of the homes. I'd just like to know if I can get a follow-up report from our, uh, fire department. I think that's an initial, where some of that information came before to, to just give an update. Specifically, there's, uh, one home on the corner of, uh, Hanover and Hamlet that, uh, that has been, uh, not only eyesore, but, uh, have shown options of activity that's, that's not welcome, so. With that, that's all I have to speak on at this time.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. And that concludes item number five on the agenda, and we're gonna move on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. And just really quickly, um, just a few updates. Uh, so, the city manager and I actually did have a meeting with our partners at Kroger, um, and we want to thank them for coming out to the city and giving updates. Uh, thank you to all the council members who submitted, um, concerns, uh, about the, the location directly across the street. Uh, just to note that they were very receptive to everything that was said, and they would like to contact, uh, our clerk of council to get everyone's schedule. They want to do a store walkthrough after they make some improvements, and that's going to include, um, a overview of the items in general and their age. Uh, that includes also, uh, the, the physical facilities. So they wanna take a look at the lights, because there were some comments that it's dark in there. They want, they are already, um, informing that they are contacting the landlord about, uh, a particular smell that, uh, people have experienced in the store, and then just also rearranging the store, so it could be more, to have more ease of access, um, and, and flow better. Uh, I, I did impress upon them that the city of Forest Park is the second largest city in the county, and, um, to have a great appreciation for the fact that we've grown a lot, uh, over the, the last years. We appreciate their partnership. Um, and I think they were surprised and very receptive to the idea, the fact that we have grown and we're gonna continue to see growth, um, and looking at, at what they can do to, uh, accommodate that growth as it relates to that, that size facility. Um, in addition to that, they did go on a tour of the community and look at all of the wonderful developments that we are, uh, having across the city, and they were very, very pleased to see that as well. But they will get back with us, uh, on a date after they make a few improvements to the store, um, and on a, um, on a walkthrough, just to see if every, everything is up to, uh, up to their standard, 'cause they have a high quality of excellence, and again, we do thank Kroger for their continued presence in the community and their partnership. Uh, in addition to that, uh, to echo Councilmember Harrison, uh, the city did give out, uh, glasses for the solar eclipse, and we want people to please, please, please follow all guidelines on if you are going to, um, look at the solar eclipse and enjoy that, because it, it can be dangerous, but it is a, uh, kind of a once-in-a-lifetime activity, and we want people to be able to enjoy that. But I do believe that we are sold out of glasses. Is that, that correct? So all of the glasses, um, that the city did provide for free to residents to enjoy this, um, this very rare phenomenon. We do not have any more, but please be careful on April eighth. Um, in addition to that, the next week, uh, April eighth is going to be a national event for the Greater Cincinnati Realtors Association. Um, it is going to be, uh, National Realtors Week. And the Realtors Association is a, uh, a, a national organization of black realtors who sell homes. They are having their annual conference, um, and every day next week, they will be having different activities across Hamilton County, culminating on the thirteenth, the Saturday, uh, which I believe i- is, is an all-day event, but it's going to be at Word of Deliverance. They're going to have a homeownership fair. So they're gonna bring a lot of different vendors, um, and homeownership resources to residents. So if you are, um, looking for something to do Saturday, the Realtors Assi- Association wanted the city to actually, uh, help them promote and get the word out. So they will be at Word of Deliverance on Saturday. And with that, that concludes all of my, my report, and I'll take any questions, but, um, for the next work session, I do want to have a conversation, obviously about parks and recreation and, and chickens. But, um, I wanna also have a, a conversation about our, our zoning code. That's something that we're actually going to look into, um, and Planning Commission coming up. But I, I believe that this is an opportunity that we can make a few updates to our zoning code, just to see if there are anything that we can improve upon, anything that's antiquated, um, that needs to be updated. But I wanna have a conversation with council, um, and with that, that concludes my report. Do I take any questions?
Um, Mayor, can you please give us the time for the four thirteenth Home, um, uh, National Realtors Week event to time?
So, they told me that it is going to be an all-day event, but I, I believe it might start around one P M. But once they provide a flyer, um, I'll make sure that, um, that I share that with the city, and the ci- city shares it out, um, on the website. But this is what was relayed to me, that they are partnering with the Word of Deliverance, and there will be about sixty different homeowner, uh, homeownership-related businesses as vendors there, as a, as a resource for individuals. Um, and it should be a good time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, uh, and that concludes item number six. Moving on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report, uh, Mister Don Jones.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. The, uh, I'll keep it short. Mentioned a lot of it. I will echo, um, my, uh, sincere, um, indulgence to the family of Bridget Kelly, a long-term friend of mine and a friend of the city, and, uh, just a tremendous loss, not only for, uh, um, her family, but, uh, for the region as well. And, uh, so, keep them in your prayers, and, uh, and I'm sure that, uh, um, family would appreciate that. Uh, moving on, uh, April thirteenth, that's a great, that's a great day. We do have the Realtors event as well. But, uh, we are having our Summer Youth Program Fair. That'll be from eleven to one on the same day, so you can hit both of them. Don't be,
Hit the youth fair first.
Yes, hit the youth fair. Lots of good information from vendors about programs that are going on this summer for your kids. Something to get your kids off the couch and get them out there. Uh, again, that's from eleven to one on Saturday, the thirteenth. Lots, lots of good things going on, games, prizes. Uh, it'll be a nice fair-type of event. Also, there'll be, uh, information there about, uh, Summer Youth Employment Programs as well, so whether it's, uh, you know, uh, adult as well. So come on out if you're looking for a summer job, or, um, I believe Kroger's will be there. We've talked to them about being there as well, talking about their jobs, but not just here at the, at the, at the store, but, you know, we're reminded in our meeting that, uh, they're one of the largest employers in Cincinnati. Uh, they have a lot of, um, not only, uh, jobs at, at the stores, but also jobs that support the stores. There's manufacturing, there's a lot of, um, trades, logistics, trucking, so, uh, a lot of opportunities there to work for Kroger. So, uh, we hope to make them a, a really good partner of ours, uh, moving forward, and make them a, a, a great community asset. And, uh, so we look forward to, uh, you know, improving our relationship with them and expanding, uh, what they can do here in the city as well. I wanna remind everyone also that the chipper program starts the week of the eighth. This year, our, go out, take a look. The schedule's out online, uh, so make sure you don't set it out too early, but follow the rules. Uh, we do have certain rules, but we also have, uh, the days listed as well as the streets. So, uh, basically, go out there, find your street, and figure out what day, uh, the chipper will be by to take care of your, your yard waste, for lack of a better term, but, uh, follow the rules. It's certain size, can't be too big, needs to be stacked properly. And, uh, we'll make it nice and efficient and make sure we get through and, and get everyone's, uh, yards taken care for the beautification committee, which, of course, I wanna remind everyone, thank you for it. We are asking that everyone sign up this year as well, so that we don't miss every, we don't miss houses. So get out there. If you know someone, spread the word, and, um, get out there, and hopefully everyone that, that wants to participate will, uh, will sign up, and we'll get everyone, uh, everyone's house, and everybody get a flag that, that, that deserves one. And, uh, we do have, I think it's great, we do have a new flag this year. Everybody's gonna want one. We'll be unveiling them. I'm not gonna try and steal their thunder, but the beautification committee, but they're really beautiful. Lot different. The kids, the kids did them, and, uh, so we'll be showing that and get more information about that as it gets closer, but. Also, um, you know, in terms of the, uh, property maintenance and zoning code issues, we, we, we have, um, we have met with other cities as part of our re- review of our property maintenance codes and policies and procedures and how we wanna proceed with that, so we'll be getting more information out to the public about that, and we're gonna try and get a lot of good public input, uh, before we, uh, before we proceed too far down that road with, uh, property maintenance code revision. So, uh, keep an eye out for that as well, and we hope everyone has, uh, the ability to come and, and give us their opinions on how we, uh, need to make changes, or not make changes, depending on how you feel. And, uh, with that, I will, um, ask for any questions.
I have.
Sure.
I have three. I'm gonna make it sure. What's going on with the signage, signage out front, the sign out front?
We have,
The update on that?
We have put it out for bid. The, um, I don't have the exact, uh, Scott gave us a complete listing of it, breakdown last week, or a couple of weeks ago. I don't have it in front of me, but it is out for bid, and we hope to have it up by the end of the summer.
Question number two. What's going on with the, um, with the property over on Waycross behind, you know where they were supposed to put the, have the, uh, homorama?
They are moving forward with their construction of the road. The, we, we, we're not sure in terms, I don't wanna say we're not sure. As far as we know, they're still trying to sell all of the lots, either to individual, uh, to either, not individual, more than one home builder, or sell them all out to one home builder.
The, the homorama, that can be scrapped, right?
Uh, as far as,
It's September.
Well, I would say that, uh, the possibilities of that happening are probably, at least this year, are not, uh, are not good, but we've not been notified by them that they are not going to fulfill that obligation. So, but I would say that it's, um, probably not going to happen based on what we've seen so far. That will, that will entail a, um, um, an additional contractual obligation on their part to pa- to pay the city, tens of thousands of dollars in, in, uh, additional fees, if they do not have that. So there's a financial incentive for them to, to try and have it, but I, I don't believe they're gonna be able to do that.
And question number three. I've seen an influx of eighteen-wheelers on, um, Wenton, Kemper, even, uh, Waycross. And I just happened to notice the sign down south on Wenton with the weight sign, so what's up with that? That's why we have so many road problems.
Well, we will, um,
Wheelers are spending more time.
Yes, they're not supposed to be here? Yes, they're not supposed to be here, uh, depending on the road. And, um, we will, um, I'll have the police department make sure that, uh, and if we need additional signage, we'll put it up. We actually had that conversation last week about, uh, fact that I even was behind a, a truck on newborn. Uh, or, uh, coming out, uh, making, cutting through the neighborhood. They get lost is what they do. They follow their GPS and you can see they got their heads down and they don't know where they're going. And GPS routes them through streets that they shouldn't be going on. Um, but, um, best we can do, you know, we, we make sure that they're properly signed and make sure that when we see it, that we, uh, that we take it, the perpetrators, because they do har- harm our streets.
Okay, and I, I, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Only question I have, we do have the fence out for bid, right?
The fence is, uh, go, it's, yes, it's, um, it should be fixed shortly.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a contractor and they are just awaiting, awaiting the parts. Um, I believe it'll be, it, I've been assured it'll be done before, um, Memorial Day. Actually before the schools need it. That's what they've told me.
Yeah, I, I would like it to be complete for the school lets out to graduate. Cause I do remember graduating and getting my name off of the, uh, off the ribbon, off the, the fence. That's a, it's a pastime here.
Yeah, they did, they did say that. It should be done before then, but.
Very good.
Um, it has been, it has been contracted out there as somebody that, that's going to fix it very shortly. They're just waiting for the, uh, materials.
I, I have one quick question, uh, Mr. Jones. It, we talked about like, um, you know, a few weeks ago, even in work session, we talked about vehicles, you know, just standing vehicles, you know? There might be junk vehicles or something like that. Does that extend to commercial properties?
I believe it does.
Okay, and, and the reason why I ask is because if you go to Forest Park Plaza, there's a boat, um, sitting in the parking lot near the, um, like the dry cleaner and the Firestone.
Okay.
And it's been there for quite some time. And then like the other day, I was taking my, uh, closer to dry cleaner, like the tarp came off the boat.
Okay, I'll take a look. I didn't, I, I go by there, I haven't seen it, but, uh, we've pulled at least two vehicles, two trailers, two R V sized trailers out of that particular lot.
Yeah.
Over the last year.
Right.
Um, we've removed them, the city's removed them. So if, if it's, there's another one there, um, it will be removed.
Okay.
We're not, we're not hesitant about taking them and getting rid of them. We just, uh, I hadn't, I hadn't noticed it, but that's, uh, I will take a look at it.
Okay. There's only one in the lot.
Yeah, yeah, it basically that, you know, just so the public knows that, uh, we did pass the junk vehicle ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, if you have a, uh, a vehicle that really doesn't work, uh, it needs to be removed from your property. The city will be enforcing that as we go through the summer.
Right.
And, uh, trying to locate, you know, those vehicles that really aren't moving. Um, and we've already cited at least four, I believe, and two of them have been removed and the other two are in process.
Okay.
Um, we didn't have to remove them, the owners removed them.
Right.
Um, but, uh, so that's, 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 that's a point of emphasis, uh, as we get into spring to, uh, let people know, hey, you gotta, you gotta find a place for these things. You just can't store them in your driveway for ten years. An unused car that's basically trees growing through it. Um, so that's one of the things that we're, we're paying a lot of attention to. And, uh, again, we'd, we'd rather work with people to get them to move them. But that's an ordinance that's new to the city. Um, the ability to remove junk vehicles from pers- from recor- from residential property.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, that ends item number seven. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is other reports. And we're going to start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff. Welcome back, sir.
It's good to be back.
Looking tan.
I feel tan and rested and ready to go. I can assure you, Mr. Jones kept me busy when I was. And I'll start with the first item. Uh, Sensei Holdings, who owns the old mall here, was cited by our fire department, um, numerous violations. They, Sensei Holdings appealed it through all the administrative channels, including all the, up to the Ohio Board of Appeals. They, they are building appeals. They lost there. So they then filed their appeal in the common police court of Hamilton County. They did not name the city nor the fire department. They caught their mistake later. You have thirty days to appeal. So I have now filed a motion to dismiss, um, that appeal since they did not timely appeal against the proper party. That issue's pending. I think we have a hearing on it April twenty ninth.
Okay.
Um, public records requests, uh, there's been a number of requests I've gotten from different departments, uh, including the police department, but there was a, um, a request to clarify, uh, police applicants, citizenship qualification under federal law. Um, he, this individual was born in Puerto Rico. He is eligible to be a police officer. So if you see that come across your collective desk, um, he is eligible under federal law, being a, uh, native of Puerto Rico. Um, you've already passed the moratorium on our recreational marijuana that I, I recommended that because we don't know what the state legislative bodies.
Yeah, we don't.
It's just up in the air and we're probably one of over a hundred communities in Ohio who have done a moratorium. Now, some communities have gone forward already and said, we're not just, we're not going to have it at all. So they've already passed that type of legislation. But in addition, uh, Mr. Mayor, you talked about the zoning code. In addition to what the state does, we don't have any zoning in place for recreational. Our current zoning only applies to medical usage.
Right.
Facilities, so. Couple of issues out of the, uh, tax department regarding foreclosures and liens that I responded to. Um, I have an individual who was cited to mayor's court for parking on grass, which is illegal, uh, here in the city. He transferred it to downtown municipal court and that's scheduled for trial next Tuesday. We had an issue with a rental registration. Um, part of our rental registration program is an exterior inspection. This landlord would not let us on. I've had some communication with her and I think we've resolved the issue in an alternative way. Um, and I, she indicated she was appreciative of my explanation to her about our new, uh, rental registration program. Uh, I worked with, uh, Rafi Nakuzzi on a citation issue, um, trying to get them to focus on using the correct citation. They're doing a little of their own interpretation. And when it comes out of the wash, it's a citation that doesn't apply. So I've been working on them to try to get that straight. Um, on, there was a question also raised by the maintenance department about, do they have to get birth dates and social security numbers? And they do. That's the only way we can track it through the court system if they're issuing citation. Um, the, our board of zoning appeals, which consists of five of you up there, uh, is going to be getting an appeal on this, uh, medical marijuana dis- dispensary from Heritage Wellness. Uh, they've just recently filed the appeal with all their supporting documentation. Um, I don't know when the hearing will be set, but I will be attending that hearing. I will be directing the city's position on that, mostly by getting Chris An- Anderson to answer questions about what the planning commission did and why they did it. And of course, I'll, after the hearing, we will go into, um, private session because you're an adjudicative body. We're allowed to do that. So that I can give you some advice and direction on what your scope of authority and power is, uh, when it comes to being a board of zoning appeals. Um, unfortunately, the applicant is very upset and has threatened other litigation in federal court against us. So, which is, have to see how that works out. Their attorney has contacted me several times, hoping to work out a resolution of this issue before the B C A hearing. But I really don't know logistically how we do that until I can actually have a conference with B C A.
Okay.
So that is the end of my reports unless there are any questions you have.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any question for our law director?
Yes, I have one with the, um, with the, I'm sorry, can you hear me? So with the landlord that wanted an alternative to the, to coming onto her property on the outside of that, do you suspect that that's something that will have to kind of envelop in that process? Or is that just a one-off situation?
This particular landlord must belong to a landlord's association who puts out a magazine article. And so she was citing a federal court case that prohibits us from doing an inspection. But I pointed out to her, that inspection in the city of Portsmouth was an interior inspection, which is very burdensome to the tenant and landlord. Ours is simply an exterior, um, inspection. And, uh, she also has a home that's inspected annually by C M H A and she's agreed to provide that detailed inspection to us. Um, so we were, she had already paid the, uh, application fee of one hundred dollars and submitted the application. She just didn't want the ins- the landlord, didn't want the inspection. Uh, but we got that straightened up because I pointed out to the, there are federal lawsuits that have found our ordinance style is constitutional. Because if a landlord refuses, following that landlord's due process rights and protections under the search and seizure, uh, constitutional issues and what have you, we can then get a warrant. And it's a warrant to inspect specifically for that reason. And I explained to her, I said, you know, it's the hard way or the easy way kind of thing. Do you really want to deal with a warrant? So we were, we were able to work it out. And, and that's why I said she was appreciative of better understanding what our process was and why we're doing this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Wykoff. All right, moving on to our other report from our clerk of council, Mr. Kia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number zero-three dash twenty twenty-four and resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four were post- was posted as required and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Uh, really quick, before we move on to the next item, I do want to thank you for all of the work that you have done, especially, uh, in that wonderful event, uh, the women's, women's, uh, International Women's Month. Um, I know it was a lot. I know it took a lot of time and, and effort, but it does not go unnoticed. The weekends that you sacrifice, um, and all of the hard work that you do to be responsive to all of us, to the city manager. Uh, so we do appreciate you and we want you to know that we appreciate you.
You thank my mama too? She'll like that.
We thank your mother.
And we would love to thank your mother for all of her har- her hard work as well.
Thank you.
And making sure that that event was a success because it was well attended. It was very beautiful. It was, uh, very good food and a lot of singing. It was a lot of singing. So, um, next I would have moved to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. Um, and here, uh, I, I'm actually really remiss and if council would indulge me, I do want to, um, to everyone's point, acknowledge the fact that our county auditor, Bridget Kelly, has passed away. Um, she was a, an incredible person. Um, I, I want people to realize that when she took the position of auditor, um, the city actually had a tax town hall for the first time in over thirty years. And to my knowledge, this was the first time in over thirty years that someone in a county seat, especially the auditor seat, had come to the city of Forest Park to be responsive to your questions, especially as it relates to taxes. So to me, that shows her character, that shows her style of leadership and her integrity, um, and her commitment to service. So if council indulged me, I would like to take a full moment of silence to acknowledge her passing, um, starting now. All right, and thank you all for acknowledging that. All right, so there are no unfinished business and general orders. Moving on to item number ten, which is the new business, and I need a motion to suspend, uh, Councilwoman Clark.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time. By title order, oh, by title only ordinance numbers zero-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
This, this ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, um, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read ordinance number zero-three dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Ordinance number zero-three dash twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending appropriations for current es- expenses and other expenditures of the city of Forest Park, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
All right, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, a motion, ordinance number, uh, zero-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, that the, uh, the initial budget reappropriation, uh, will improve adjustments with the, uh, economic department, taxation, public works, and the, uh, police department. And, uh, in addition, adjustments will be made to refund account, accounts for insurance proceeds held from the previous year. So with that, I motion for the ordinance number zero-three dash twenty twenty-four.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. All right, ordinance number zero-three dash twenty twenty-four passes seven zero. Now I need another motion to suspend, uh, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read for the first, and read for the first time by title only resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Um, just that this resolution was posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend?
Harrison.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes seven zero. Uh, now, will the clerk please read resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four by title only?
Resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract for services related to the installation of a multi-use path at Central Park.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yes, sir. This resolution enables the city of Forest Park to grant a contract to Loveland Excavating and Paving to install a multi-use park surrounding Central Park.
All right, is there? Yeah, well, really quick, it, it's going to be a multi-use path. Right, yeah, I was, I was, that threw me off just a little bit, but yeah, it is mostly multi-use path.
I guess it was a typo.
Yeah, it is a typo. Yeah. All right, um, will the clerk please call the roll on the, on the motion?
Well, first we don't have a second, but he have a motion.
We don't have a second?
That was the discussion.
Oh, will you, will you make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to, uh, adopt resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All right, now it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I've noted this, huh?
All right, now will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Holt.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
All right, resolution number eleven dash twenty twenty-four passes seven zero. So thank you for that. And now, uh, I need a motion to receive the general fund summary report. There a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion, uh, to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Further discussion.
All right, this could be a voice vote, so all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes and that concludes all of our new business. So is there any other business to come before the body? Yeah, Don?
Um, next council meeting, do we, can we discuss that? Or can we discuss that?
So she, Ms. Harlita is, she thinks we'll be able to be out by six.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah.
The next council meeting there, that'll be, uh, the fifteenth, that'll be tax day. The next council meeting there, that'll be, uh, the fifteenth, that'll be tax day. And that whole week, we use this facility right here.
Right.
As part of, uh, but there'll be people stacked up in here all day, all week.
Okay, right, right, right.
And, uh, we weren't sure if we'd be able to have it empty by the time we had a seven o'clock council meeting, but.
She said she'll be finished by six.
Harlita said she'll be finished by six, so.
Okay.
We'll be finished by six.
Yeah, all right. All right, so is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. This council meeting is adjourned.